If you happen, anyone happens to go over their three minutes, we'll motion you and let you finish your statement and then we will go from there. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Keithley.
Thank you, sir. My name is Robert Keithley. I taught at Carson County High School for 24 years. Taught economics or fundamentals of free enterprise. And I always tried to instill in my students of fair play and I'm asking for the commission's fair play on this particular evening. There's been rumors that there was supposed to be some kind of a, an organized effort to bring about a parade in downtown Carson County next weekend. That's just a rumor. LGBT was to have some kind of a massive demonstration in downtown Carson County, I'm assuming beaten street. As we all realize, there are certain liabilities that might be involved as far as accidents, mishaps, damage of property and so forth. So I encourage the city council, whatever you decide on any kind of a downtown parade, to possibly consider requiring a beaten street bond issue that would require the organizing group to put up a certain amount of money to cover any injuries that might occur. As you know, when the light turns red, you walk. When the light is green, you stay still. But if you just go downtown Carson County sometime, you'll notice people get off the curb. And sometimes when people turn a corner, they turn it pretty tight because these people have to jump back. So this is just one little example of my concern about the city of Carson County assuming certain liabilities. And I would encourage some type of liability bonding that would be required of the organization that is planning on a parade in downtown Carson County. So that concludes basically what I would like to say. And I do have some acronyms. BICB is Beaten Intersection Crossing Bond. B-I-C-B. And that bond could be $600,000, a million dollars, whatever you want to place. But I do think the city should not assume the debt that might occur as a result of an accident or injury to someone attending the parade. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Keithley.
While we can't discuss items on the, that are not on the agenda, I can tell you that there, and I was checking to make sure there's no parade that's approved or being held within the city of Carson County at any time in the, in the future. So if we're here about a parade, there is no parade that's planned or approved. So I just wanted to, in case anybody's concerned, there's a parade. There isn't. So.
Thank you. Okay, next, Charkey Marquis, please come forward.
Charkey Marquis, 6453 Northwest County Road 1120, Carson County, Texas. It's good to be here with you today and I appreciate hearing those words and we will, we're glad to hear that. We, as the local churches, want our community to know that we support our community, but we also will stand against things that we believe that are unlawful and incorrect for our community. In our community, we've got many different people. We've got Christians. We've got people who have no faith at all. We have people who have different or claim different sexualities. We had homosexuality and we got hetero. And we even got yuppies here in our community. We even have people from, in our community that have come from different ethnic groups. We got white people and African Americans. We got Hispanics, Asians and even Middle East. We're a collection of people who are different and unique outside the religious reasons why Any of these people groups. Parades are a time to celebrate in heroes of war, celebrating key times in the past and holidays that have been a part of our history since the nation was founded. Our city council should invest their resources and celebrate, they should not invest their resources in celebrating any people group who just want to be affirmed and put on a pedestal. Please remember, the money spent or the money is the money that comes out of your community's pockets. City council, you must remember, if you agree to support this or anything like this, you are starting down a slippery slope. At this point, you may think supporting a parade like this is a good idea, but you may not support the next one that would be coming down the pike. If you support this parade, then you have started a new precedent in our community. As for those who are here representing the gay community, don't see our standing against this parade as a stand against you personally. Although I stand against this parade, we are not standing in hatred for you. You are loved and you are cared for by the local churches represented here, even when we disagree. That being said, we will not, we will not celebrate or tolerate a parade like this.
Thank you. Thank you. And I knew I was going to pronounce names wrong tonight, so please forgive me on the second one, the second one. All right. Dr. Danny Reeves, please come forward.
My name is Danny Reeves, pastor at First Baptist Church. I've been a part of our community for 15 years. And first of all, I want to just tell you personally, I don't have any notes. I just want to share with you from my heart and will Shayla, Jeff, you guys as council men and women, I just want to tell you that we appreciate you. Thank you for what you do for our community. I understand because my son-in-law sits in this seat that's vacant tonight, that this is a thankless job. It seems like every time somebody stands up, they're probably coming to complain. But I just want to tell you, thank you. You sitting in that chair tells me you care about Carson County and that matters to me. The second thing that I want to say to you is, is that I'm a follower of Jesus Christ. I'm honored to know that I have a God who's forgiven me of my sin. I don't stand here tonight in any way haughty, angry, malicious, mad. I don't have any sort of vindictive type feel. I just simply want to celebrate the fact that my God bestowed amazing grace on me. And as a follower of Jesus, I have come to know that the Bible is my guide. And that guide tells me that this type of sexual perversion, it's outside of God's will. And so my, my ask of you this evening is when we have a group of people in our community that wants to be held up like this, even though they have the free will to do that, God gives them that free will. They have freedom as citizens to live that way. I wish they wouldn't, but they make that choice. That's God's, that's God's gift to them of free will. But when their free will infringes and asks me to pay for it, that's where I have a problem. And so I stand before you this evening to say, don't pay, don't use my tax dollars. Don't use all these people who signed a petition. Don't use all these people that are standing in the foyer and even out on the porch. Those are our tax dollars and we're asking and we're expecting you not to use these funds in any way on what we believe to be perverse and to shove some sexual agenda down our throats. I will continue to pray for you. I am your biggest supporter and I want to be your support. Mr. Mayor, I support you and are so thankful for you. Thank you for allowing us to come tonight to share. May God bless you as you serve our city.
I want to repeat, there is no parade. So there's no parade.
Derek Rogers, please come forward.
I am not a resident of the city of Carson County. However, I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the residents of Carson County that attend the Cowboy Church Carson County where I pastor. First of all, as Danny said, I want to say thank you to all of you who are willing to give of your time to serve on the city council here in the city of Carson County. It is a worthy cause. I know that you said there is no parade or has been discussed, but as you know, we're here tonight to discuss that it's hearsay that there has been a proposal of using taxpayers' monies in order to fund a gay pride parade here in the city of Carson County. And that's what we're here to talk about tonight, not to debate whether homosexuality is sexual perversion or not. You who sat here tonight as council members were elected by the citizens of Carson County to represent them. Most of you were elected because the citizens felt they could trust you to make decisions on their behalf that would ensure that their tax dollars would be spent wisely. Spent in ways that make Carson County a great place to live, such as creating policies and laws that protect those who elected you. Smooth roads to drive on, sidewalks to walk on or perhaps even ride bikes on. Safe water to drink. Proper zoning laws that protect residents as well as businesses. Making sure we have a strong police department as well as a fire department. Bringing new businesses and appointing qualified officials such as yourselves to serve this city and the people it represents. You were not elected to be a council to promote an agenda for the LGBTQ sector of this city who uses words like fairness, inclusion, or inclusivity to pressure you to cave into their desire to be celebrated by using taxpayer dollars to fund a parade of sexual perversion that will have absolutely no good or positive benefit to this city. If we talk about fairness, inclusion, or inclusivity, the LGBTQ people in Carson County drive on the same roads, they walk on the same sidewalks, they drink the same water, they're protected by the same police department as well as fire department, they shop at the same stores, they eat in the same restaurants, and they enjoy all the same things that everyone else in Carson County that pays taxes enjoys. Isn't that fairness and inclusive enough? I close tonight by urging you not to bow down or bend the knee.
Two, three minutes, sir.
And waste the hard earned money of the people who pay taxes and trust you to spend them wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Rogers.
I also wanted to add, there is, there is a budget that's been proposed and there is no money in the budget for any gay pride activities whatsoever. So I can just tell you, there's nothing in the budget for that. So, so there's no parade. Looks like Marcus Bedford, maybe?
Whoever signed up after.
Okay. I'm sorry, help us out.
My name is Michael Bedard. I like, I am all, yeah, I'm a Pentecostal and I speak in tongues and I also write that way. I also, I live in 7622 Northwest County Road 1300 out in Berry. So I am not a resident of Carson County, but I am establishing my position here tonight amongst you all. And again, it's been said so many times, thank you for your help and your service in our community. But I want to establish the fact that despite the fact that there is no parade scheduled and that there is nothing budgeted at this time, the talk of such a budgeting issue goes against everything that the church of Jesus Christ stands for. It's, it goes against everything. Now, in approaching this meeting tonight, this, this council meeting tonight, I'm going to be honest with you, I came in with a heavy heart, Mr. Mayor. Because the thing that, that I fear, there are people who have spoken and who are going to speak, who are far more eloquent than I. However, what I want understood amongst the LGBTQ plus community is that the church does not hate the LGBT plus Q community. God does not hate that community. That is a wrong perception. What we are opposed to is tax, tax monies paid in by individuals who, whose hard earned money have been put into this city, their money being spent potentially in such a fashion. We are opposed to that. But the, but back to the issue of the church hate somehow hating or being enemies of the LGBTQ community. The Bible says, and I know we're not at church, but again, Pentecostal. For God so loved the world, so loved the world, that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believes in him should not perish, but have everlasting life. That's Bible. That's fact, that's true, and that's what the church stands for. We are on the side of this city, we're on the side of this council, and we actively seek the LGBTQ community to find Christ and his shed blood for them, to be redeemed and saved throughout all eternity in the name of Jesus Christ. Thank you.
There's no parade. I feel like I need to say it.
Next, I'm going to bring a little levity. It looks like we had two doctors sign up to speak at the same time because I can't read their signatures. Earl's.
Schwartz, yeah. Marty.
Sorry, I could see Earl, I could see the last name. How are you?
Not here to talk about that. Just kidding.
Marty, 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 Marty.
I just, I just wanted to let everybody know that about two years ago, my mother on a fixed income wasn't making it. So I had to help her. My sister called me about a year ago. I'm making it. Got to help. You know, there's nobody helping me. You know, every time I turn around, they're raising my taxes. I'm helping my mom, helping my sister, but I'm nobody special. There's a whole bunch of people just like me behind me. I'd be willing to bet, there's a bunch of people like that in front of me. It's tough. We got to be smart with our tax dollars. I know they just raised them again, but we just got to be smart and smarter. It's just a, it would be a waste and insult to those that are doing the best they can with what they got. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. Next, Elisha Paul Harley. Say that correctly? Thank you, please come forward.
Elisha Paul Harley, 200 Oak Ridge Lane, Dawson, Texas. Righteousness exalts the nation, but sin is a reproach to any people. Proverbs 1434. I humbly come before you in opposition to any form of supporting or embracing what some call gay pride, which is indeed a sin against God primarily, against society as a whole, against one another, against our children. Frankly, it is satanic and it is evident by what it accomplishes. It destroys marriage as God ordained it, family, the innocence of children by way of encouraging them to participate it, influencing them, and in some cases even mutilating them. It lies, calling good evil and evil good. Calling men women and women men. This is just to name a few. These are things that Satan does. Any form of embracing this would bring evil, harm, shame, and disgrace to this city. I'd like to speak to three categories of people, citizens and leaders alike. First, to those who love God and are against this evil. I will say the same thing written in God's word in 1 Corinthians. Be steadfast, immovable, always abounding in the work of the Lord, knowing that your labor is not in vain in the Lord. Be on the alert, stand firm in the faith, act like men. Let all that you do be done in love. Secondly, to those who are on the fence or indifferent or wrongly think that it is loving to accommodate this evil practice, I say what Jesus says about himself in Matthew 1230. He who is not with me is against me, and he who does not gather with me scatters. Also in Joshua. If it is disagreeable in your sight to serve the Lord, choose for yourselves today who you will serve. And lastly, to those who support this evil, I tell a warning, hope, and prayer. But first, I have no need to argue or prove the reality or truth about God, only to read to you what he reveals in Romans 8, Romans 1, 18 to 20. For the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all ungodliness and unrighteousness of men who suppress the truth in unrighteousness. Because that which is known about God is evident within them. For God made it evident to them, for since the creation of the world, his invisible attributes, his eternal power and divine nature have been clearly seen, being understood through what has been made, so that they are without excuse. And now the warning, 1 Corinthians 6, 9 to 10. Or do you not know that the unrighteous will not inherit the kingdom of God? Do not be deceived, neither fornicators nor idolaters nor adulterers nor feminine, nor homosexuals, nor thieves, nor covetous, nor drunkards, nor revilers, nor swindlers will inherit the kingdom of God. But now for the hope, verse 11. Such were some of you, but you were washed, but you were sanctified.
Two, three minutes, sir.
But you were justified in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ and in the spirit of our God. I also was.
Your time is up, sir. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Thomas McNutt, please come forward.
I came to complain about my water bill? Just kidding. I did want to tell you a quick story. There was a group of people in town who, who knew that there was a minority group in town that needed to be recognized. A minority group in our community that's not recognized enough, one that needed to feel more welcome and more at home among us. And they got together and they said, how can we recognize this group? And they said, well, what about a parade? Well, that group got together and that group is called the Texas Veterans Parade. And I hope that's a parade that we all support. I know you do. That effort did not kick off by saying, well, how are we going to fund it? Well, let's go straight to the budget meeting and go dip into our neighbor's pocketbook to fund it. That's not where the conversation began and that's not where it ever went. I know because my dad founded that group and he pays for it and he gets friends of his to pay for it and he gets businesses to sponsor it and it's an awesome effort. Because he knows that when you go to a budget meeting, you're talking about other people's money. OPM and opium can be a heck of a drug. So you got to watch others' people's money. Because those are property tax dollars and the things that those should go to are things that we can all support. And that's having the bravest law enforcement officers around and making sure they know we have their back. And those. And having, and supporting the bravest firefighters around and making sure that they know we have their back. And having. And taking care of these beautiful parks that have been donated to the city and having smooth roads and wonderful infrastructure, keeping a lean office around here, which you do. And I'll just be honest, if there's any money left over after those things, you know what that means? It means we're overtaxed. It means we're overtaxed and you should give it back. That's it. So, thank you for your service and please, please, let's filter our public resources toward things that are universal and we can all get behind. Thank you. God bless.
Elizabeth Grouser, please come forward. Pronounced that correctly.
As you stated, my name is Elizabeth Grouser, address 300 North Spikes Road Retreat, Texas. And I'm here as a mom, community member. I again want to thank each of you for your role that you play. I've recently become more politically involved and I see how many meetings that I've missed that I'd like to be a part of in the future. It's a reminder of us all not to be asleep at home while rules and proposals are made in our midst. Unfortunately, I was on a prize of today's supposed, as stated earlier by Ms. Donika, topic of discussion until a couple of days ago, but I'm thankful to have learned about it in time to attend and speak. Assuming many people had signed up to speak in opposition of this evening's supposed proposal to utilize city funds to promote a gay pride parade, I did not come prepared to speak, but knowing the gravity of this topic and the downward spiral of our nation at such an accelerated speed, I felt compelled. I stand today as a representative first of Christ, a wife and a mom to two young adults, a volunteer with our local Republican Party, wife of a law enforcement officer and military drill sergeant, and actively involved in our community. We have an opportunity to support local businesses who are genuinely striving to bring wholesome commerce to our city. When did it seem appropriate to utilize taxpayers' dollars to propose and furthermore support a perversion of God's design for men and women yesterday, today, or tomorrow? There's a quote I want to share and I'll leave it here. A man dies when he refuses to stand up for that which is right. A man dies when he refuses to stand up for justice. A man dies when he refuses to take a stand for that which is true. Stated by Martin Luther King Jr. And I just want to say that I appreciate being a part of this. I know it's been stated that this is just a possible rumor, but rumors take root somewhere it started and at some point, this may become an option for our city and I just pray that it is not.
David Taylor, please come forward.
Thank you. I'm David Taylor, 122 South 12th Street, out of the road. First, I'd like to address the council members, the mayor. I have three items I'd like to talk to you or address tonight. First of all, we've kind of danced around it and that's the budget. The budget, for anyone behind me that does not know, is very transparent. It's on the city of Carson County's website. You can look at it. It's 205 pages long and I know that putting that budget together was not an easy task at all. And so I'd like to thank the council, the mayor, the city manager, and also the department heads who also had to contribute to that budget. I'd like to thank all of you for the time and work and effort that you spent putting that budget together. Secondly, is the tax increase. Everyone here has experienced an increase in higher prices for food, for utilities, for insurance premiums. It just costs more to live. And I, our city employees, our great policemen and firemen and their families, they're no exception to those increased prices and they deserve a cost of living increase. So from, and then if we sit on your side of the table, from the city standpoint, contract labor, repairs and maintenance, materials costs, electricity and other utilities, all of those things have gone up. So where I'm headed with this is I don't like tax increases any more than anybody else. But I, but we need to understand that in order for the city to continue to provide the services that we need and enjoy, a tax increase is certainly justified. And I personally feel like the budget and the small tax increase was very fiscally responsible and I commend you all for that. The third thing is the allocation of our tax dollars and city funds. I read through the first 105 pages of the budget and I'll have to admit, I really skimmed very hurriedly through the last 100 pages of that budget. And as, as Carrie's already pointed out very clearly, unless I missed something, I didn't see anything in that budget that I would consider to be morally reprehensible. Like it's been said before, I firmly believe that our tax dollars or our city funds should not be allocated to any events or materials that are sexually explicit or perverted in nature. And if any of y'all are pressured to do that, there's many of us, as you can see in Carson County, that's going to stand with you and encourage you to stand firm and not succumb to that temptation. Thank you very much.
Next, Shayla Johnson, please come forward. Next, Shayla Johnson, please come forward.
Six feet tall, sorry. Shayla Johnson, 1801 East 9th Avenue. Good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank you all for coming and giving me the opportunity to address recent concerns. I understand that emotions are running high, and I want to clarify a few things to ensure we are all on the same page. Recently, it was brought to my attention that there has been some confusion regarding my statement about recognizing Pride and Juneteenth. Local church meetings have been held by our very own city councilman, Chris Woolsey. And what I intended to convey was a simple observation about neighboring towns showing support for diverse communities or recognizing a series of events during the months on how inclusivity can coexist with tradition. For example, Waukesha Hachy in Ennis puts Juneteenth flags and a Pride flag at their park at the interest of the city, just to say, "Hey, we know you exist." My comments were not to propose for a large-scale event, but rather a suggestion to consider small gestures of how to make everyone in this town feel equal, knowing that present and future investors feel open to diversity in the small potential growing town. I understand there might have been some miscommunication, and I apologize for the confusion that may have been caused. My vision is to hear the citizens in this community and be transparent as much as I can. It was never my intention to create diversity or unnecessary controversy among the community advocates or to suggest any changes without community input. Our goal should be to build a community where everyone feels valued and heard. I recognize that some of you have concerns about these initiatives and how they might impact our local traditions, and I respect your views. My hope is that we can work together to find a balance that honors both our community's traditions and the diverse perspective of its members. I am very disappointed that a falsified rumor was started in order to gain political favor. And moving forward, I will be mindful of grace given due to misconception because one day it might need to be received. God was crucified, so I know I'm not exempt from any attack. However, I am covered in his blood, so I am protected. God bless.
Thank you, Shayla. Next, Terry Garner, please come forward.
First, before I make my statement, my statement is dealing with the fear and hate that Councilman Woolsey has put into this community. Okay? The fear and hate, that's what he's done. I have a video of Councilman Woolsey at churches...
Can you state your name and address, please?
I'm Terry Garner, 1401 Bowie Circle.
And we need to refrain from...
Upon the return of Jesus, one of my, one might contemplate his potential first question to humanity. I ask you to do one thing: love. So what happened? This question prompts reflection and concept that God represents love, and Jesus embodies the perfect expression of that love. It raises fundamental inquiries of how humanity can sometimes struggle with fully embracing embodying love, as evident throughout history of the failure of individuals upon, opposed love while claiming devotion to a God of love. A recent incident involving Councilman Woolsey causing a stir and generating hateful sentiments in response to a question from another councilperson highlights the paradox of opposing government interference while spearheading an effort of hate. This situation leads to considerations about genuine Christ-like behaviors. Celebrating diversity in a small town holds significant importance as it is, as it serves to foster inclusivity, understanding, and a deep sense of community among its residents. Embracing diversity goes beyond mere acknowledgement. It involves ensuring that individuals from various backgrounds feel genuinely valued and respected. This fosters a welcoming environment that is beneficial for all your residents, encouraging the exchange of ideals, traditions, and cultural practices, and enriching the overall fabric of the community. Such celebrations of diversity catalyzes the development of more vibrant and dynamic social landscape, ultimately leading to a greater unity and collaboration among all residents. And I'd also like to state that my husband and I, unlike Thomas McNutt, but his uncle does, funded the first gay pride event in Corsicana, and it was very well received and very well attended. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Alexa Nurendorf, please come forward.
Who is it?
Alexa Nurendorf?
My name is Alexa Nurendorf. I live at 1500 Maplewood Avenue. I'm going to read a comment from a friend of mine who opted not to stay. They had other obligations. These are not my words, first and foremost, and then I'll get to my statement. They say, "If your misinterpretation of the Bible, politics, or plain old personal bigotry led you here to speak against a pride celebration in Corsicana, I'm here to let you know that you can just ignore it like you do school shootings." That's it. I'll get to my own statement now. I'm kind of surprised to be, see so many people here. I was debating on coming, frankly. Thank God for Shayla, by the way. I love your comments. Uh, I wish this many people showed up to participate in things that mattered, like discussing actual ways to improve the city. You guys are welcome. Come on out, instead of protesting gay people. A gentleman spoke here earlier. I'm gonna state, I've heard a lot that there are a lot of church members here, and you're here to represent your faith, and that's all well and good. A gentleman spoke here earlier about struggling to pay his bills and how he didn't get assistance. That is supposed to be the function of the churches here. I wish you guys would focus on that. Stop sending people to the other side of the world on poverty tourism missions. There's poverty here in Corsicana. You can work on that. I lost some friends to suicide as a kid. One of the ways that I coped with that was delving into the psychological research on the things that can be catalysts for suicide and suicidal ideation. That began a whole spiral for me personally. I've researched on lots of different social issues, but this is a pertinent one, so this is the one I'm going to address tonight. Most studies show a strong correlation between kids that identify as queer, LGBT, and suicide attempts and suicidal ideation. And I'm here to tell you, I grew up queer in Corsicana, and it sucks. And the reason that these kids are out here contemplating committing suicide, killing themselves, is because they feel unsupported, unseen, and vilified by their community. I know because that kid was me. I fly a Pride flag year-round at my house, praying that the kids that are going to school every day that can see that Pride flag know that there are people that love and accept them with no caveats.
Alexa, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Tabitha Brotherton, please come forward.
My name is Tabitha Brotherton. I live at 102 North 30th Street, Corsicana, Texas. Been a resident here for many, many years. We moved back. My husband, I heard them mention veterans, husband's a vet. I went to high school here for a few years. We moved back when he got out of the Army. So we've been here since 2007. And unfortunately, I am just absolutely saddened, and I just had to come today because it's really crazy how little response and how little people show up when it's important. But when they come to bash gays and members of their own community, their neighbors, their loved ones, wow, they're out there laughing and giggling like it's a big joke. And again, this is one of the things that Alexa just touched on. I work with young people. I've been around young people a long time, and it makes me absolutely disgusted and saddened that y'all will sit here and say, "We don't hate you. We don't hate you." But you have people, kids, that would rather kill themselves than stand for this. It's disgusting. Again, no parade. Nobody's asking for money for anything, just simply to exist and not be hated just because you exist. And there needs to be a lot more talk about that because, wow, it's 2024. And to sit out there or stand out there and see that, it's just, wow. I mean, I'm a resident here, and it's, I just, I just wanted to come and say it's absolutely disgusting that I have friends, their homes have been just like... Their homes have been violated. You go on Facebook, look at our Corsicana Talk and all the messages. "We hate you. You don't, you don't need to be here. Go away. Go somewhere else." The council should not, should not, just to sit here and allow and take this and take this. And then there was another gentleman saying, "Oh, well, you know, you're evil. You're evil." I mean, literally, there are people standing here telling members of this community, "They're evil." That's disgusting. I don't know how or why we give a voice to this, but I just wanted to come and say that every single person in this community matters. It doesn't matter who you are, what you believe in. It's cool. If you're, if you're a Christian, great. We, go be a Christian. If you're not, cool. That's the cool thing about our community and our country. It's called the First Amendment. But the other thing about that, the First Amendment is, it's also your freedom to have your religion, but it's also freedom from everyone else to, to have your religion. So don't come in here and say, "Oh, well, my church this and my Bible this." That's great. But not everybody believes the same, and everybody deserves to have that afforded to them.
Thank you. Rihanna Gerke, please come forward.
Well, good evening, city council members, mayor, Ms. Standridge, and Ms. Donica. Uh, my name is Rihanna Liver Sage Gerke. I reside at 5810 Northwest County Road 291 here in Corsicana. I, I don't believe in coincidence, but I do believe in design. And so whether it be rumor or not, I believe there is a reason that we have all mobilized to be here, whether it's to equip and protect against future endeavors, so be it. I believe that God gives wisdom, visions, and dreams, and so we are here for a purpose. I founded a nonprofit here in Corsicana. I've worked, I was a chief program officer for a nonprofit here in Corsicana, and I live here in Corsicana. I'm going to talk about this in a public health perspective because I've worked in public health for over 10 years and health promotion by degrees in community health education, finishing my master's degree in biblical drug and alcohol counseling. And so I want to approach this from a public health kind of perspective. And when it comes to treatment of disease, we look at short-term and long-term effects. We can look at mosquitoes and how we use insecticides to prevent transmitted disease in mosquitoes. The short term, it worked, but in the long term, we created mosquito resistance. I'm very curious, and this is something I'll admit, I'm, I'm the rebel in this, in public health, because public health, not everyone sees it the same way. But I'm curious as to why we don't inject the same kind of caution when it comes to social issues as we do when it comes to treatment of disease. And the actuality is, we don't know the long-term side effects of injecting some of these social issues, especially when it comes to our youth. I chose to take my kids out of public school. I was in another county. I chose to take my kids out of public school because this mission of diversity, it's great until it affects other people's beliefs, religion, and what their kids are being told when the parent isn't around. And I was flabbergasted, really, at what my kids were being told at schools when I wasn't around, and I moved here from California. I was blown away, and God told me to take my kids out. Recently, my daughter went to use the restroom at a convenience store, and a male walked in. I was blown away. This is not about not loving you. Please, let me say that again. I love you. No matter who you are, I love you. I love this community. Jesus loves you. All these pastors that spoke today...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shailin Gerke, please come forward. Did I pronounce that correctly? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Shailin Gerke, and I live at 5810 Northwest County Road 291, Corsicana, Texas. And I have concerns about the proposal to host an LGBTQ festival in our city. Personally, I believe such an event might not align with my own values and could potentially create discomfort for individuals who share similar concerns. While I recognize the importance of embracing diversity, I believe we should carefully consider whether this is appropriate for the rest of our community. It is crucial to ensure that the events we support will reflect on a balance of viewpoints and contribute positively to the overall cohesion of our city. I would much rather see more funds go toward, to youth sports since that benefits more than just the pop, one population. And we don't have enough youth sports organizations in Corsicana. I deeply appreciate the time you have given me and the opportunity this was to be here, and I hope you take my viewpoint and reasoning into consideration.
Thank you. Billy Joe Kelly, please come forward.
Good evening, mayor.
Good evening.
It's kind of managing to the... The Corsicana, to all of y'all.
Thank you.
What I got to talk about this evening...
Would you please state your name and address first, please?
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry.
I've got...
That's okay. It's okay.
My name is Billy Joe Kelly, 903 East Collin, Corsicana, Texas, 75110.
Thank you.
Uh, what I'm here to talk about this evening is, is, uh, trash men. They pick up brush, and what I got to say, I think they're doing a real good job picking up the brush, trees, the limbs, and blowing down in the street. So, uh... Just keep the guys on the clock, because they're doing a good job, okay? All right. That's all I had to say. I'm going to give y'all...
Thank you.
Give y'all back two minutes.
Thank you. If I mispronounced your name, Brian Johnson? You were the last person to sign up?
Oh, Derry.
Another doctor's signature.
Good evening to the mayor, to council, Ms. Standridge, to Carrie, and to Ms. Johnson for the Jones. I didn't prepare a message, and use one. I'd prepare a message. It's pretty, for about 45 minutes. I thought Billy Joe was going to, going to say a little longer, but since he had a short stay. I do want to, again, let me just state, my name is Gary Johnson. I live at 221 Hampton here in Corsicana. I pastor church on the east side of Corsicana. Been there 39 years as servant. Never seen anything of this nature, but we live in a world where we see transition. Everybody has rights. This one has right, this one has right, but you don't have the right to, to, to imprint it on me or the citizens of Corsicana. We have a right to say what we need to say, how to say it, the way we want to say it. And when we pay our taxes, we want to see our taxes going in the right formula. And not to, to have, I don't know whether the parade... And not to, to have, I don't know whether the parade, I don't know whether it's parade or not, something had to happen for all these people to be here tonight. So for whatever it is, if it's something has to do with taxpayers' money in the way of parading one ethnic group, is wrong. Can I get to say amen? It's just wrong. And so, I just, I just feel that I didn't come here to bash anyone or to give my theological precepts. But any wrongness, a way of living, when you live wrong, is a sin. And sin has to be dealt with. And we can't parade as though anything can go on. And I say this, and I'm through. God made man and woman. He created them and told them to go and multiply. A man can't deliver another man, and a woman cannot deliver another woman. This is all God's plan, and all unrighteousness is sin. And sin will be dealt with, whether you like it or not. The wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is eternal life.
Hey, that would conclude our public comments. Thank you for...
Still no parade.